All right, Jan. Special School Board Meeting. There are no items or additions, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda that we have today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Go ahead.
Motion by Sachin and a second by Sakhouten. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Our only item on the agenda today is to interview our candidates for our school board vacancy. So I'm just going to start off by saying thank you so much for being here. Thank you for expressing interest in applying for our board vacancy and just your willingness in general to serve the community. I'm just going to start out by just saying a little bit about how this process is going to go. So first of all, the full board realizes that this is going to be the most awkward job interview you've ever had, and we get that. So it's a little odd in public on being televised. We understand that, but we really want you to make this as comfortable as we can. So if you have, if you figure out a question that's asked, feel free to ask for clarification. We're here to support and just get to know you the best that we can. If you need to take a break for whatever reason, even if another candidate's answering a question, feel free to get up and use the restroom. We'll wait for you until you come back, or I can pause the meeting too. So just feel free to speak up if there is something that you need. So how this is going to work is each, we have some questions as board members that we would like to ask just to get to know you as candidates a little bit better and understand a little bit about what would make you a great board member to join us. I'm going to kind of go down the line. Each board member is going to take turns asking a question. If they don't have a question, they'll just pass and I'll go to the next one. And then how it's going to go is going to be kind of panel style. So I will start, so each one of you will answer the same questions, and what I'll do is I'll rotate who answers first. So Kate, you're probably used to having, going first, having a last name like A that starts with an A. I get that, you're in alphabetical order, so I'm going to ask you to probably be the first person to answer, and then we'll go down the line. And then Catherine, you'll be the next person to answer first, and we'll go down in kind of in that same fashion. So everyone gets a chance to be the first one to answer, if that kind of makes sense. We're going to do about, the Q and A portion will be about 60 to 90 minutes, and I'd just love if you could try to keep your answers to two to three minutes or less. That's totally fine. If you're going on eight minutes, I might do a little sign that's like, we got it. That's just to keep the meeting moving a little bit. And then when we're done with the Q and A portion and the board has the information we'll need, we'll dismiss you, and you are free to leave the building, the meeting, or join the audience. And then the board will deliberate and nominate a candidate to join the school board. So before we get started with our Q and A, does any, do any of you have candidates have any questions for us? All right, sounds good. Well, I will just kick us off with questions then, and I will start with, what, tell us, tell us about why you are interested in joining the District 196 School Board. So I'll start with you, Kate.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, everybody. It's great to be here. I am interested in joining the 196 School Board because I went through 196 growing up. I'm a graduate of Eagan High School many, many years ago. And since then, I've had a really challenging and amazing career in education in Chicago. And we are back. We've been back for about two years. I have three children in 196, and it's been amazing to, it's sort of a homecoming, I guess. And I deeply care about education, educational spaces, educational places. I care about children, like many of us here. I care about teachers. I'm a former teacher. I still teach. I am a coach. I am a collaborator. I've been in administration. I've worked across districts, and I've been in some really amazing and hard places where critical conversations need to be had, and I lean into those conversations. And so I think that I have a lot of assets and values within the field of education from being a mother and just from being in the art and science of teaching for many years. And just a side note too, I think that our district is, the optics are beautiful, and I think that, right, that we have a lot of really powerful places to lean into around curriculum, around teachers, around teaching and learning. Another thing is I'm just, I'm a strong collaborator, and I'm also a consensus builder. I, I think just being a coach in nature, I help to bring ideas and people together, even if we don't agree, and in really humane and respectful places for the betterment of children and teachers and teaching and learning. So that's why I'm here. Thanks.
Catherine.
Thank you. I am Catherine Diamond. I'm a mother of three who attend Woodland Elementary, and I see Principal Carlson out there. And I come to this with, kind of from a tangential angle. I have over 16 years of professional experience in public health and education fields. I'm here running for a school board because I believe in the incredible opportunities of schools that they have as a community center that can support the growth and health of students, families, and communities. When decisions balance data and community voice, schools can provide the resources and services for academic and life success for those served within the walls of the school, but also the communities that surround that school. I currently lead the Injury and Violence Prevention Section at the Minnesota Department of Health using a public health and health equity lens. So this means we join together data and community voice to make decisions about systems change to improve health and wellness across the state, focusing resources where needs are greatest to decrease disparities. I lead a focus on preventing adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, as primary prevention for a number of negative health outcomes, including suicide, substance use, and violence. As a school board member, I'll bring my focus on data to increase situations and environments that make people safer and healthier, and decrease situations and environments that put people at risk for injury and poor health. The aim is always to support academic and life success for students, families, and educators. So I come as a mother, as the daughter of a public school teacher, and a community member looking to provide balanced, a balanced view, to make data-informed and community-supported decisions to benefit all of District 196. Thank you.
Leah.
I'm a parent and a strong supporter of public schools. So the passion for that and the passion for supporting our schools, our teachers, and our students is key to why I'm interested in serving on the board. I'm also passionate about making sure that we have safe and welcoming schools for all of our students, and that's something that I think, in light of people pushing in the other direction, I think we need people who will stand firm and be strong to support all of our students having that safe and welcoming environment. I bring an economic lens, in particular, when I think about inclusion, and that's because of my day job where I work on hunger relief. And I think that all, this is in particular to District 196, but I think that schools in general need to think about economic equity in addition to racial, gender, ability, and all the other types of inclusion. I think there can often be unintentional stigma, and I want to bring a really strong lens to making sure as our district grows and diversifies that everyone is feeling welcome and not singled out for their family circumstances. And then I think that, you know, we've been through a lot. I've been involved over the last several years. I've been impressed with our district's leadership and have seen many struggles that we've had to rise the occasion to overcome with COVID response. But I also think now we need to keep pushing for solutions-oriented, change-oriented approaches. I don't think that, that we can sort of rest easy that we're one of the best. I think we need to keep reaching to be better and adapt as our community is changing and growing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
Hi, I'm Rachel Shoemaker. Why I am interested in joining the school board is not only because I am a mother of two. My daughter has just started elementary school in Shannon Park Elementary. My son will be going there the next year as well. I am also the daughter of a career educator. Education has always been a part of my life. Watching my mom teach, being in my mom's own classroom even from time to time, has given me a passion for the teachers, the educators that all sow into our community, being able to see the hard work and support that they put in to the school, but also that they're also needing as well. I also am interested in joining the school board because of the work that I do as a mental health professional. I'm a licensed therapist, and really began working closer with schools when I was doing contracted work with Dakota County through social services and juvenile corrections. And a lot of that work was working with families who had kids that were really struggling with, whether it be school refusal, truancy, their own mental health, and working closely with the families and school social workers and teachers to find ways to support the families and support kids to be able to get back in the classroom and be able to have the best quality of education and life that they could have. In doing that work, it was very rewarding, and I also became very aware that there are much-needed resources for not only our kids and our families, but also for the teachers within the classrooms to be able to do the best that they can and meet kids where they're at.
Excellent. Thank you. Art, do you have a question for the candidates?
Certainly. As Corey said, thank you all for coming tonight. I sat where you were about 15 years ago when there was an opening on this, a rare opening on this board, and the board was interviewing candidates, so I know how nerve-wracking this can be. But, you know, as Corey, I think, did a good job trying to put you at ease, just, you know, we know what it's like to be sitting there and having to answer these questions. A question I have for you is kind of a real-world situation. If you're on the board, this happens to me often, if I'm at the grocery store, I'll be in Target or something, and somebody will stop me with an issue that they want some help with. So put yourself in that position, you're kind of walking, doing your business, and somebody stops you, and they're having a problem with a staff member, a teacher, at a school. As a school board member, walk me through the steps that you'd take in response to this person's bringing you this issue that they're having with a particular staff member.
And we'll start with Catherine this time.
Okay. So, you know, I think a lot of it depends on what that problem is that they present with. I think that we have really passionate parents, and some problems warrant faster action than others. I think that there are certain situations where you gather more information, you know, you go to the school, you talk with the administrators, you get a little more research and information on what the problem is before you would make any sort of decision or move because it might not be the school board's scope. So I think you have to be really careful about staying in your lane, and sometimes just filing information in the back to, you know, to bring up if that is a recurring issue. I think there are other issues that certainly warrant immediate action, you know, whether it's discrimination, whether it's some form of abuse, you know, things like that obviously need to be acted on immediately, and so you take that to your fellow school board members. You figure out what the appropriate action is and, you know, and what needs to be further addressed. I think for sure, even in those cases, you do more research. You know, we're not here to make accusations that are ill-informed. So I think a lot of times when those issues are brought to your attention, it's a responsibility of the school board member to do more research to learn if it's a systemic problem, if it's a one-off, you know, get more background on why that is a problem.
Leah.
So I think it would first be important to maybe have a dialogue with the person that wants to talk about, you know, what are the roles of a board member and what aren't. And so, you know, I think, not to say I wouldn't be interested in listening and understanding a person's problem with an individual teacher or staff member, I do think listening for especially themes and things that might be a larger issue is important, and I'd be open to doing that anytime. But I would be more interested in trying to figure out if that person has gone through other channels, and I guess particularly what I'd be trying to understand is, you know, if I can recommend, okay, so have you, have you talked to that? Have you brought this to the teacher? Have you brought it to the principal? Like the other layers that I think should be available for that person to offer their feedback. I'd be trying to understand, has that happened? And listen for communication breakdown? Or, you know, if there were barriers to somebody being able to communicate through any of those sort of first step processes? I'd be wondering and interested if there's something that we need to do differently in order for that feedback to not be sort of festering at the grocery store, wherever you said the concern would come up. Because, you know, what if you weren't in the store at that time? Or are you the only one that they trust to listen? Or, you know, kind of there's got to be something underneath that. So I think that in a nutshell, like I would still, I would listen. I do think it matters, and we should have an ear to community. In fact, I have spent a lot of time knocking on doors, talking to my neighbors, trying to understand what parents or other stakeholders' concerns are. And I will say there's a lot of, I think, room to clarify and improve what are the communication and feedback channels that we do have. So I understand it. But I think, as was stated earlier, we also need to stay in our lane. And so I wouldn't necessarily be seeing myself as the right first step for that person to deliver that feedback.
Thank you. Rachel.
When I hear this question, I think about what I've done when I've been out in the community before and in my current job. I'll have people come up to me, whether it be colleagues, clients, that sort. And the way that I go about that is, I think it's really important to just take a minute to listen and get an idea about what is the concern, what's going on, and just being able to sit and just validate the person that what's going on with them, what the concern is that they're bringing to me is important, and it matters. And at that point, seeing if there is anything realistically that I can offer or a resource that I can point them to, if it's something that is outside of my scope, being open about that, but also willing to direct them to where I think it would best land and they could get the best support.
Thank you. Kate.
One thing that comes to mind is the truth in all three of your guys' responses. I feel like if I could take, right, sections of all those responses, I would, and I feel like we should as members of the board. So thinking about, right, if I'm a voice for the people coming in as a representative, but I'm also the voice of the board, that's an interesting place to be, and I'm sure you guys know exactly what that feels like on all fronts. So my response is a little bit like Rachel's. I'm the Black Hawk Vice President. I'm also on the PSA at Oak Ridge, and we're near and dear to community concerns, parent questions, all sorts of things of that regard. And so I think, again, just being a coach and somebody who wants to connect, I would say, can you tell me a little bit more, just to clarify what exactly they're saying? So I'm not walking away with any assumptions. I'd want to be a listening ear. I would want to position myself as somebody who is there to hear a concern. Then again, I also would keep in mind my, my position as a board member and stay in my lane as well. I don't think a grocery store is an appropriate place to have a lengthy discussion about anything regarding that. But at the same time, I would want to make myself very approachable because that is important, and I think I would have to be careful with what I did with that. So wanting to hear more, letting them know that I've heard you, I hear your concern, offering potential additional resources or other places to go to for clarification or to get your answers questioned. And then I think I would end with, how else can I support you? What can I take to the board so that I make sure that I'm addressing your concern? I might not be able to solve it now. In fact, that's never my job individually to solve anything. So just making sure that I've got a clear feedback loop. But it also reminds me of, I would want to know when I'm on the board, how do we respond to that? What kind of conversations are in place internally? Do we have a protocol? And what does that look like? And have we sort of role-played that out in different scenarios, just like this question demands? Like what, what do we do and how do we work through that so that we are ready as a team and open, approachable, yet a team that knows that we're, we're doing this together, that not one person can answer for the board? Thanks.
Thank you. I will turn over to Sakhouten for our next question.
Just wanted to say thank you and welcome, and also thank you for willing to serve. My question pretty much will be, my interest is pretty much to assess, how will you understand the complexities of the important issues that we deal at school board? Not only that, I wanted to also, my interest is to assess how well you better serve our various stakeholders, most importantly, the students, our educators, parents, and also staff in general and the community at large. So my question is pretty much is, how do you envision implementing the district's vision of developing the whole student and honoring diverse needs and cultures within our and our school communities? Is that clear?
Yes.
And for that, we'll start with Leah.
So I think as far as our role as a school board member in what I'm hearing you say is, you know, in achieving our mission, I think we have a few different ways that we need to fulfill that. One really important thing, I think, is our, our role in strategic planning. So I think it's less about what are we doing this school year, and more about what are we doing to prepare today's children for the future, you know, 10, 15 years from now, right? We have to take a really long view with that in mind, and I try to imagine when my son will be graduating, and I can't. So I realize it's, it's difficult, but I think one key way is that we need to dig in to trying together to envision that future. And part of that, I think, also means robust stakeholder dialogue to the other part of your question. We don't have one type of family or one type of student, and I think that's our, one of our strengths is, is that we have amazing and growing diversity in this district. But diversity without equity can actually be pretty damaging. So what I'm looking for is making sure that we're meeting each individual student where they're at, to meet their full potential, and that might vary according to different skills and abilities. That might vary according to their racial or economic background. And I think we need to do a lot of engagement with youth themselves. Maybe that's an area for growth. Parents, I think we know have a lot that they want to be providing feedback on. Seems like we need more channels there. So I'd love to just make sure that we're offering multiple sort of on-ramps to feedback from community, teachers, youth, parents, all stakeholders, to make sure that we're building an inclusive and equity-minded strategic plan, and one that doesn't sacrifice, I think, the, the high quality that we have right now. I mean, we are proud to be a destination district, but I want to stay, I want us to stay that way, and I want us to get even stronger, and I think that's going to require adaptation. So I think those are, those are some of the things that are, that are top of mind for me when I think of that question.
Thank you. Rachel.
Would I be able to hear the question again?
Certainly. So the question, I'm going to read it this time. So how do you envision implementing the district's vision of developing the whole student and honoring diverse needs and cultures within the school community?
Okay. First and foremost, I think increasing the way that we connect within the community to better understand the diversity in the population that is with us currently today. I like what Leah said about being open to adapting to what's around us, the unique gifts, the unique struggles, and the individuality of each student that comes through. I think that engaging students in a way that enables them to have some ability to express themselves, learn in their own unique way, and be empowered in their interests and their strengths is one of the best things that we can do for students and families and the community as a whole. There's not one kid that I've worked with that I think has been, you know, one of the same. And I think that while some of the current systems that we have in place work really well for some students, there's definitely a lot to be said for neurodiversity amongst kids and students, and even, I would say, the teachers within the school district as well. And there could be a lot of benefit to being open and willing to learn more about what those differences look like between different cultures, backgrounds, and the like, to truly open up all the opportunities for equity to everybody that's involved.
Thank you. Kate.
Yeah. I start from a few places come to mind. I think that, I know, we are a diverse, resource-rich school district, and I think it's okay to say we have a lot of room to grow. And I think one thing that's really important is who's coming to the table? Who's coming to meetings? Who feels welcomed? Who feels like they are being seen and heard? And I think one way we do that is really lean into school and home and community connections. Looking at what are the ways in which we've, right, everyone is, I believe, it's, I was able to look through the strategic plan, and it is beautiful. And I want to peel back each of those areas and say, what does this look like? What's been done so far? And what else do we need to do? And who are we asking that we need to make some, some changes or improvements? And I think we need to lean into families of marginalized students, whether that be because of race, economics, language, identity, and say, how do we do better for everybody so that you come to the table? And we see diversity truly as a strength, not as something else to be done. And I think that I, it also makes me think very critically and deeply about student outcomes. We all have student outcomes on our mind. Currently, I work with an organization, I'm a consultant, and we've been doing a lot with standards-rich instruction. And I know that can be a term for anybody, but these are middle school, middle school instructional leaders that have accepted our work as, it's a National Department of Education grant, and we are, we are, we are funded and helping instructional leaders change outcomes for their students. Because we know right now there is an opportunity myth. We think we're providing standards-based, rigorous instruction across the board to everyone in our schools, and it's not the case. And right, that, that, that's across the nation. It's not a District 196 issue, it's not an urban issue, or a rural issue, or a suburban issue. We need to ask ourselves critically, how else do we continue to work for students? And... We need to ask ourselves critically, how else do we continue to work for students? And one thing that we've been talking about is double-loop learning. If you're approaching the same problems, especially if it's a sort of a practical and tactical problem with the same approach, you need to loop back and really zoom into mindsets and think about how we can continue to transform and deepen our district with asking, I think, those critical questions around what our strategic map has, because it is beautiful, right? We want students to have wellness in the schools and at home. We want teachers to feel empowered to teach rich curriculum. We want teachers to feel supported with coaches in their building and a strong administration. And in some ways, right, we have so many things going well, and it's okay to also ask tough questions and say, what else do we need to do, based on students' mental health, based on how they're doing in school? I also think about that from my own positionality. I am a second-language learner in terms of Spanish, so English is my first language, but we speak English and Spanish in our home. And I think about, too, the privileges that are afforded to certain students because of language. And it makes me continue to want to put that on the radar for students that their first language is Spanish, right? And we're, right, or Somali? And how are we meeting the needs of our multilingual learners in our district? Because everywhere we have growth and places where we can continue to do better with that. So, yeah. Thanks.
Catherine.
So it's hard going last because people have already given really great responses and great ideas. But, so some of this will be repetitive, but I think, you know, each person has spoken a bit to this idea of data and community voice. And I think that those are what decisions should be made on. You need to balance both of those. And we have a lot of data that is available, you know, just through the Minnesota Student Survey and looking at the results and being able to look at our district, identify spaces where we can focus to really meet that whole student, whole person goal. You know, in looking at the data, it's close to 35% of all students in our district feel that adults in their community care about them. You know, and I'll repeat that, 35% of students feel that adults in their community care about them. That's a really small number and was pretty shocking. But that calls out this idea of, we need to have more adults that are showing up and showing that they care for students. So some of that could look like looking at the diversity of staff and really paying attention to who do we have in these school buildings? Who can kids look to and see themselves in? Whether that's, you know, economic situation, race, gender, sexual orientation, kids need to see themselves in successful adults so that they know that they too can be successful. So I think in order to look at the whole student and really support them, you need to couple data with community voice. So again, someone else mentioned, you know, talking with the students. But it's talking with students, families, and communities, including spaces that maybe we don't automatically think of with students, you know, businesses, what do they see in their community with youth? You know, lots of people see young people in different spaces and it can be a different view than teachers. I know, you know, my kids are different at home than they are at school. They're different at camp than they are at school, than they are at home. So it's really getting this holistic picture of students, of young people. I think that the board has started to do really great things with doing things like community listening sessions at schools and really taking the time to pay attention to what people are saying. But again, I think Kate said it, you know, who's at the table? Are we getting representation from all the different cultures that make up our schools and our families and our neighborhoods? So I think it's really, in order to meet the needs of the whole student, it's listening to the whole student and really being able to listen to voices that interact with students in their, you know, kind of in their 360 view.
Thank you. I'm gonna throw the next question all the way to the other end of our board table to Anna.
I applaud you for being here. Takes a lot of courage to do this. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to do. I'm going to ask an example-based question. Okay. Can you give an example of a time where you've intentionally sought out different perspectives other than your own to better understand a situation or a problem? This is a three-parter. So that's the parameters. What was the problem? What did you learn? What was the outcome? Do you want me to repeat that again? Okay. Give an example of a time you've intentionally sought out different perspectives other than your own to better understand a situation or a problem. First question, what was the problem? What did you learn? And what was the outcome? What did you do based on that better understanding?
And we are going to start with Rachel.
Okay. Making my notes here. Something that comes to mind for me when it comes to seeking out a different perspective to better understand a situation or a problem, one of the modes of therapy that I'm trained in and I operate the most out of is DBT, so dialectical behavioral therapy. And part of that program is being a part of a larger consult group within the practice that I'm at. And the specific purpose of that group is for all the therapists that work within this program to be able to come together and have a comprehensive treatment for the individual that is within the groups, that's within individuals. So it's the group leaders and the individuals coming together to be able to fully conceptualize each individual and their struggle and to be able to come together to determine what is going to be the best way that we can serve them. What is going to be the best interventions and the best suggestions and things that we can do to help them have the best quality of life and the best experience that they can possible? And a lot of times in that consult group, it is going out of our comfort zone to listen to other professionals with other disciplinary focuses to even be challenged on the approach that we're having with our own clients. So while I can't necessarily say exactly like what was the specific problem that I encountered, because that's confidential, just within my role, it is, I can't think about how to phrase that. A lot of the times, it is problems with, whether it be client engagement, it can be struggles with a lot of high-risk behaviors, interactions, and being able to seek out the other professionals that I work with and be not only challenged in what I believe my initial best approach would be, it opens me up to being able to be flexible, to learn new insights, new ideas, whether it be from a group leader or somebody that has a similar experience as a client. And overall, it is finding a balance and not being pulled into one extreme or the other, because oftentimes in my experience, anytime we lean towards an extreme, we kind of lose the focus of how we can actually help or what we can actually do. So learning to be flexible, learning to be balanced, and then the outcome is always being able to allow for an individual to feel heard and to be encouraged in their ability to move forward and get the exact help and assistance that they were looking for in the first place. Feel like I kind of rambled on that one, but that's about what I got.
Thank you. Kate.
Yeah. One example that comes to mind is when I was a university instructor and I was charged with, so I was an instructor for teachers training to be, students training to be teachers in a graduate program. And this is a top-tier university in Chicago, right? And you can kind of hide, you know, I think, being in that university, I'll just speak for myself, I could have sort of hidden behind like the credentials of what it meant to be at that university. And also look at how I was hiding, I think, under the guise of being a coach and instructor in this prestigious program and not necessarily addressing topics and issues of problematic teaching in classrooms, especially when it came to situations of teachers being different from the students. So it might be racial difference, it might be linguistic, economic. And so as a university, what we also talked about is, how do we recruit teachers of color to teach students of color and be in communities of color if our staff doesn't represent that? Especially if we're doing the work of having teachers, or soon-to-be teachers, really think about, why do I teach in the city? Why do I teach with diverse student populations? What am I doing here? Right? And so we had some really powerful caucusing, some race-based caucus groups. We talked a lot about white privilege. We talked about all sorts of different manifestations of identity. And what it showed me, and at this point, I was probably 10 years into coaching, is that I put the relationship of coaching first over hard conversations with teachers. I thought that I had to build up a strong relationship to address a topic such as race or language that I saw teachers do. And we also talked about that as an organization as well, saying, how are we recruiting these, how are we recruiting teachers? What is our recruitment criteria? What do our interviews look like? And really just unearthing all sorts of, all sorts of issues that needed to be addressed when we're talking about race and privilege. And so it transformed my coaching, because I didn't think that I was doing that, right? Until I was able to sort of hide under, not necessarily hide, but navigate under my light-skinned privilege, my language access, my education, and do the role of coaching without having really hard conversations. And that was my role as a coach, is to advocate for the teacher, but also advocate for children in classroom spaces, because these are new teachers. And that's another thing I still feel very passionate about. It's a five-year program. It was two years of master's work, but then you have a coach following you for three years to help you with your practice. And that's something I believe deeply in, is that teachers need to be supported. Because when teachers are supported, children are supported. So anyways, I share that too, because when I left that organization, the first thing that I put on my radar when I went to consult on my own is I asked different organizations or projects or people that might need, you know, my work as a consultant, as a coach, how does your organization tackle topics of race and identity? What do you talk about now? What do you need support with? To even know if I would be entering into that space, knowing that was a non-negotiable for myself, is that these are conversations that have to be had and I wouldn't make, my learning couldn't take a long time, because children and communities and families are waiting on having those hard, can't wait for those hard conversations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Catherine.
So a time when I had to seek out opinions other than my own or views of others, we recently received, at work, at the Department of Health, we received instruction to create a grant program for people living in underserved communities that were also survivors of trauma. The wording was very vague, it was very open, and we had a lot of questions about what the true intentions of this instruction was. And so we went to the source and we sought out people who are survivors of trauma, who were involved in the writing of this instruction, and asked to meet with them to get their thoughts. Open up a conversation to discuss a little deeper, what are your intentions? What do you see as coming from this grant program? And so we really listened, active listening, you know, asking a question, really listening to what they were saying and allowing them to lead us in the conversation. And so from that, we learned really deeply what this community was looking for and what their intentions were. We heard their concerns of the community and we heard very clearly the opportunities that existed to work with the assets of this community, to provide them with the resources and the services that they knew they needed in order to address their trauma and truly heal from their experiences and meet their needs. So the outcome of this conversation, this listening session, was to create a grant program that better serves Minnesotans, Minnesotan survivors of trauma. But more importantly, it really created a strong relationship between us and this community who we now have an honest, transparent relationship with, because we were able to come to them and say, we don't understand. And they were able to explain to us, we listened, and we were able to show that we had heard what they were saying and provide them with an appropriate program.
Thank you. Leah.
Well, this is going to be strikingly similar to this scenario that Catherine just presented. But I will say that, you know, doing this work of seeking out perspectives other than my own is pretty much a daily responsibility that I feel in my field. So I work, again, on hunger relief and I represent the hunger relief community with lawmakers. So there's a whole lot of spectrum there of different life experiences and perspectives, and my job is to bridge that often. So as you may know, hunger has risen exponentially over the last several years. And one question that we always have is, what about the people who aren't showing up? What about the people who aren't showing up at food shelves, even though they exist, that aren't enrolling in food assistance benefits, even though they exist? I have many theories about that, have had them, work with many people who have their own theories. But one thing that I'm really proud of, since I started working in my role, is that we've built multiple channels for hearing directly from people with lived experience with hunger. And I want to be clear, there's not one magical channel. But one of the coolest things we're still doing is that we have a monthly meeting with a cohort of people with lived experience that I think it's hard to say who loves it more, them or us on the staff, because it's just a really great group. And I think everyone has gotten a lot out of it. But so the problem being, you know, not understanding what might be the barriers to people getting help if they're experiencing hunger. What we learned, I think, is more than I can summarize, but in some cases, affirming priorities and instincts that we already had organizationally and in the community, like, actually, poor people do want healthy food. You know, some things that we knew, but like needed to lean into in order to prioritize, what does that then mean? We need to see in terms of programs and resources available. We learned and affirmed, and I think underscored, the need to address other barriers, like, if you can't even make a phone call and have that phone call get through to the person that you're supposed to be working with at a state agency, what do you do? And just the level of the brick wall that I think sometimes people encounter getting resources, all of that spirals into, you know, different levels of policy change, sometimes actual changing of the law, sometimes engaging with service providers to change up their models. I mean, it's way more than I think we can get into, but bottom line, it helps us understand our priorities, whether we were on the right track or whether we were missing things. And it's not a one-off, right? So the outcome of that, most importantly, is ongoing relationships and conversation. People reach out to me from cohorts that have now come and People reach out to me from cohorts that have now come and gone, the current one with sometimes very immediate situations, sometimes completely unrelated things, but we have relationships, right? And, and we talk and, and I'm responsive and open. And I think a lot of this does translate into a board role. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. You guys have done a really nice job, so thank you. My question is, the district really prides itself on our AAA philosophy. Do you agree with that philosophy and how would you support it if you were on the board?
And for that, we will start with Kate again.
Could you repeat your question one more time, Jackie?
Yes.
I know I'm the first one, but.
Right. The district really prides itself on our AAA philosophy. And I was just wondering, if you are on the board, how would you support it or not support it?
One way that I would look at it is I would think about, again, I think what's, what's working well for our students and our families and our teachers, and what is not. And then how do we assess that, right? How do we look at the academics, arts, and athletics and say, where is our programming? Where does it stand? And similar to what was mentioned before, thinking about needs assessments. What's already been done? What are the assets that are deep in our community? They've been there for a while and we're going to grow them. Here's how we're going to grow them. But what are some places, again, where we need to peel back a little bit and say, this might be serving this group of students or this, or this family, and maybe not for another? And so, again, I think through a series of needs assessments, critical conversations, really leaning into the community, asking the right questions, and making sure we do what we need to with those answers is really important. And I'm very curious what the board, right, already had. I know it's not my turn to ask you guys a question, but, right? It, that's, it makes me wonder, what's already in place and where, where do we go with that? Same thing, where do we build on the type of questions internally that we're asking each other and our, our perspectives at the table? So we're making sure that it's, again, the right questions being asked, so we can have those drivers really make a difference. And then, of course, I just think context is so important. If there's one thing I've learned as, again, a coach and a teacher and working in administration and just, just being a human, you can't take something and just set it in place and say, we're going to make this work for our community and for our kids. We've got to be critical. And I think sometimes it can be confused that being critical means that it's, that it's based in negativity or it's based in not wanting to see strengths. And I would argue the exact opposite. I would say, it's okay to really appreciate where you are, grab onto those strengths. Everyone's going to have different places where they, they enter it and they, they name those strengths, but to continue to say, where can we keep improving? So I, that answer does feel kind of broad, Jackie, but I feel like we can do that with all three areas. And also just ask, who's closest to their feet on the ground? Are we asking the students what feels good for them? Are we asking parents? Are we asking teachers? And taking all of that and saying, okay, what do we do with this? And then once we try something or we propose something, try it out and see how it works and then come back and keep readjusting and growing and learning. Because there's one thing we know in education, you've got to keep being curious and innovating and leaning in.
Thank you. Catherine.
Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. Our district really prides itself on our AAA philosophy. I was wondering if you supported the AAA philosophy, if you were on the board, would you, how would you support it? Or where is your support for AAA philosophy?
Got it. You know, I think I go back to, so I can say I support it. I think it's a great, a great philosophy. I think that academics, arts, and athletics, you know, it, when we encourage kids and youth to participate in all three, it really creates a, a whole person. I think, you know, it doesn't matter if you're good or bad or, you know, what, but in experience, I think, makes a richer person. And much to, much like what Kate said, you know, I think we need to look at evaluation. I started my work at the Department of Health as an evaluator, and so that's really where my passion lies and most of my training is as an evaluator. So I like to ask questions about, you know, what, what's working? Why is it working? Why is it working here and not there? What can we do to improve it? And so I think it's important to always be having that feedback loop with evaluation and assessment, looking at what, what success looks like, having a definition, being able to create benchmarks so that we know if we're moving in the right direction or what direction we're moving in. And I think it's important to also continue to ask, who needs what where? This is a big district. I think that we have different, we have different strengths in different areas. You know, clearly, we have many different school buildings and they're not all the same. And so we need to take that into consideration and really start to focus in on why certain things are working in certain places, you know, who's involved, what are they doing? But doing it in a very systematic way so that we're, we have equal measures, we can make comparisons, we can make educated comparisons to really figure out what needs to be done in different spaces. So I think it, in order to support the AAA philosophy, you have to be asking the questions about it and about what needs exist to, to fully support that philosophy in all of the spaces with the many different people that are involved.
Thank you. Leah.
So I think the short answer is, is yes, that it's something that I support. The way I look at it is that it's, I think, maybe interrelated to the concept of, of a whole student, right? And making sure that we're finding and nurturing different passion points that are going to vary from one person to the next. So, and I also would say, like anything else, I think this should be open to, one thing, adaptation. So as, you know, as we're looking at different metrics and where we're doing well and where we could strive to do better, is there more attention needed in one very, one area versus another? I think that's always something that we should be asking because time and resources are precious. And I also think, really importantly, it needs to be considered with an eye for inclusion. Does everyone have access in the same way to each of these different experiences? And on that, I'll just do a quick shout-out to being proud to serve right now on the 196 Foundation Board. And just one example there, as it relates to instruments, you know, the idea that we want every student to have the opportunity to explore musical talents, as the child who asked for a harp and didn't get it. You know, like, do you have access to the instrument that you want? And I think we've done some really great work to address that. I question, I don't have the answer, but, but I would ask the question of athletics. And if we're, you know, doing everything that we can there, I just know as a parent, athletics is a huge time and resource commitment. And so I, I want to make sure that there's equal opportunity in, in each of these areas because I do think that they're all important to nurturing the whole student and helping kids love school, right? Which, if they don't love it, it's hard to, to give them the, the success that we want.
Thank you. Rachel.
I would say I definitely support and agree with the AAA philosophy. I do believe that it could be amplified through more accessibility and more services that can be in the school and just on-the-ground resources. I think that the academics, arts, and athletics is easy to access for some, but not always for others. I think about the statistic that I believe it was Catherine brought up earlier, about how 35% of kids only feel supported by an adult. And I look at the, particularly the mental health systems we have in schools right now. You know, some schools are lucky if they have one social worker and maybe one therapist that comes in a couple days a week that can see a handful of kids. And I just think that if we can increase not only support in schools for kids to feel heard and encouraged and met where they're at, to explore and seek out the experiences that they desire and that they need through that philosophy, I think that could open up a lot more accessibility, opportunity. Because while there are some resources there, there might not always be families that feel like they have a good connection to those resources and just having more people that can be talking to and meeting with kids and even meeting with parents and families to connect them to the places they need to go. That would be my main area where I would say we could improve on the AAA philosophy.
Thank you. I will now turn our next question over to Suchin.
Thank you, Corey. And again, thank you for being here. It takes a lot of courage and you have my utmost respect and admiration for participating in this, in this process, so thank you for that. My question is about, for, for you to maybe think about this as a, almost in a persuasive theme, right? Being on the board, there's a lot of opportunities in the district and oftentimes you have to pursue or convince with our authority or influence with our authority or other board members to focus on certain areas. So it takes the level of, what is the problem? What, why is it important? Like, the why? So as you answer my question, which is going to be around, what are those areas that 196 should be focusing on but currently isn't focusing on? And my question isn't about, and I'll speak softly, so the first person who answers has some time to be, to prepare for this. But my question really isn't about, what do you think we should do about the problem? But it is really about trying to convince your peers as to why it is an important problem that needs to be addressed. So it's more about the focusing on the why and not the how. Does that make sense? Would you like me to repeat it at all?
Please.
Okay. Thanks for your honesty, Rachel. So my question is around, what is an area that 196 should be focusing on but currently isn't? But my question to you is the why. Why do you believe that's an area? And not about, how do you think we should address that problem? Thank you.
And for this, it is Catherine's turn to start us off.
All right. So I'm going to talk about hiring diversity, and I would imagine this is happening in the background, so I'm not going to assume that this is not something that is a focus on 196. But I'm not in the background, I'm not in the back rooms, you know, yet, and so I don't know for sure. But I think that it's key to so many aspects of schools and, and success. Because, as I mentioned before, it is so vitally important for young people to see themselves in successful positions, in positions of power, in positions of leadership, because that's the only way that they know that they can be there. You know, I think of my young daughters and how, you know, for right now, they want to be teachers because they see amazing teachers. But to them, that's almost the only profession that they fully comprehend because they interact with them every day. But students and young people need to see themselves reflected in all sorts of different positions. So they need to see themselves as the principal, they need to see themselves as the CEO, they need to see themselves as the banker, the, you know, you name it. But that includes also when, you know, it, it includes little girls needing to be able to see women in places of power. It includes youth of color seeing people that come from their same country, you know, in places of power. And I think that, that starts within the school system and it starts with teachers and administrators and, you know, mentors that are within their school system, all the different people that come into a school building to share their expertise and their knowledge. So I think that the district really needs to focus on their hiring practices to make sure that their student body is reflected in their teachers and in their administrators. And then also reflected in all the different extras that come with being in a school. So coaches, extracurricular leaders, et cetera. So I think that diversity in hiring would be what I would advocate for.
Thank you. Leah.
So I'm also going to talk about staffing a little bit because I think it's something that I just haven't had a chance to touch on. So I think that one, one important area that I'd like to make sure that we're focusing on as, as a district is in recruitment and retention, especially of our teachers, also our paras. There's a lot, I mean, probably across the board, there's, there's a ton of need and competition around staffing. And I do think that our districts are only as strong as our staff. I think it, at this point, is a point of pride. I think we have excellent staff by and large and that's why we have excellent outcomes. So, again, focusing on recruiting, and I, I do agree, recruiting more diverse teachers and staff, and then also, as important, I think, retaining good staff. To your actual question on how to persuade, I, I mean, I think this is a little bit my playbook on persuasion in general, so, for better or worse. I think it is important to look at the data, right? So what is it going to mean? What is it going to look like? If we aren't focusing on this, how many people are going into this field as opposed to now? I think you can paint a picture pretty quickly that we're going to run into a teacher shortage and potentially a crisis on this if we do nothing. So what are we going to do to get ahead of that as, as a district? How are we competitive when it comes to compensation? And really, at all levels, right? You know, if you can make more at a fast-food restaurant than serving in our school cafeteria, that's problematic. So I'd, you know, I'd want to build up some of those data points to understand what the issue is and why it's important. I also think storytelling is, is probably more important than data in my experience. So like, what are some examples of what we've done well to retain people or maybe why we haven't retained people? Why have we, when we've gotten somebody excellent brought into the district, how did they hear about us? Why did they choose us? So I think those stories are, are important. When it comes to relationships and working through, like, how does this fit in the scope of other key priorities that other people on the board might have? I'll just say that I do think that I'm a good bridge builder. Like I said earlier, I, I don't think I could do my job if I, if I wasn't good at that. I talk to many people with many different perspectives every day. I think that's important and it's important to see each person and their value, try to build a relationship from where you have common ground, try to understand more deeply, not surface level, what differences you might have. So I take that approach to relationship building in general, and I would say I am grateful and proud to have strong relationships with pretty much all of you. And so I've gotten to know the board well and I think that I would, I would prioritize making sure that I'm communicating and building relationships and understanding and a sense of partnership with everyone else on the board. So it's not just about me and what I want, but a balance of what each of us bring as our passions, our concerns, et cetera. Yeah.
Thank you. Rachel.
So what comes to mind for me as... So, what comes to mind for me as to an area that 196 should focus on but currently isn't? And then also, kind of like, what would be the why behind that? What comes to mind for me is I really think that there needs to be a focus on a holistic approach to student well-being and care, but not only for the students but also for the teachers as well. This is why my focus in a lot of the questions has been calling out resources in mental When we have supported kids and happy students, I think we have happy teachers. And teachers have such a high responsibility, a high demand, a high workload. I remember myself watching my mom. She was a single mom, a teacher as well. And I was there early with her in the mornings before school. And I was there late with her in the afternoons after school. And then often, when she would go home, it was still grading. It was still lesson planning. It was still figuring out, you know, what can I do for this one student that's having a hard time? Or it was just this constant, you could tell her mind was always spinning about how can we make this better? How can we, you know, keep showing up for the kids and the students every day? And I think being able to look at how do we support students in the way that they need so that the teachers have the more support in the classroom and space in the classroom to really do and be free to teach and flourish in their own role is really, really important, especially if we talk about teacher retention and, you know, how do we get teachers and keep teachers? It's, you know, I'd say not only are they, you know, being paid what they're worth, but do they feel like they're supported in their role just as much as we can try to support the students? And I think a why behind, how come that may not be a focus or why that's difficult to have a focus is I just think simply it's complexity in nature. It's a multi-layered change and approach to, I think, how the system is usually run. And with that, you know, I think that includes hard conversations and having to sit with probably a lot of conflicting opinions and views on how that would be achieved. And I think that as a why, I think it's just human nature that sometimes we shy away from stuff that's uncomfortable and is hard to talk about. But that doesn't mean that it's not important and it's not critical to still try to explore.
Thank you. Kate.
Oh, this question. I really appreciate the way you phrased it as well. I think one thing I'm going to start out with is I'm going to speak from a place, like just what you asked of, I think, passion. But I would front-load that with, I actually don't know everything about how the district is doing and what they need to work on. So, I want to say that first and foremost is that I'm making this statement out of something that I'm personally passionate about. But I'm very curious as to looking more into what is actually working within this area and building from there. So, that being said, for me, and I know many people here, childhood is an absolutely sacred time that needs to be protected. And I think that can look different ways for different people. And what I can speak about is I think that just somebody being so close in the field of education, still teaching. I'm a sub at Amigos del Bosque, an outdoor emergent, child-led, dual-language pre-K program. I go and sub there when needed. I'm subbing in various classrooms in the metro area. I'm doing professional development for that same organization. It makes me think about what we know about teaching and what we know about brain research with kids. A lot of times, that doesn't match the curriculum that we're teaching children. And sometimes, we can get caught up in metrics. And we can say, because this has been assessed and measured on a certain standardized test, this shows that everything is okay. And so, I like to put that first and foremost and say, what information are we gathering from this test? How is it important and what might we be missing? And with that, I might say something. So, for example, I fly out to Chicago once a month and I work with teachers in schools there with purposeful play, early childhood classrooms. These are three- to five-year-olds. And I work with the instructional leader. And I work with some teachers around protecting play in early childhood classrooms. And I had a friend recently say to me, she said, she's a coach in Minneapolis. She goes, isn't that sad that you have to go protect play? Right? That's what I mean. We know that play is the work of children. That is how they learn. But somehow, that's been taken away and we think we need to push second-grade standards on pre-K children. And we need someone, right, needs to keep saying, this isn't right because so much happens when little children play and they make meaning. And I'll say the same thing with early math. Prior to becoming an early math coach, I was scared to death of math. But they said, the organization I worked for, they said, you're a coach, we'll train you about early math. It's beautiful. We're mathematical beings and math is everywhere. But that's one of the main reasons that pre-K teachers become pre-K teachers because they're afraid of math and they think they don't have to teach it. Right? But if we show children that math is in their bodies and their hearts and in their arms and it's all around, it's such an amazing way to have kids develop their brain. And we know that that brain is developing when we make those mathematical connections for them. So, those are two kind of specific examples. Another one is same thing in adolescents. We know, brain research shows us that in adolescence, in early adolescence, 13 to 18, it's a second chance. So, if children didn't quite have, right, the most positive environment or everything they needed, that's that second chance that many of you guys talked about. Where is a caring coach? Where is a teacher that they're passionate about? What instrument are they playing? That has now opened up a whole other area in their brain for what comes next, right? So, again, I question the curriculum and saying, is our curriculum, is all of our resources supporting children in the ways that we know the brain grows and best develops across the board? Pre-K to eighth grade. I don't know that much about high school, but, you know, there's, that's my specialty is pre-K to eighth grade. So, continuing to think about that and saying, where can we have interdisciplinary teachings? Where can we have emergent curriculum? I'm super passionate about outdoors. I think that we have such a resource-rich environment. And 196, our woods, our streams, there's so many opportunities. When I was on the referendum committee and we were thinking about, you know, just looking at the proposals, I was so surprised that there wasn't outdoor spaces on that. I think that that's something we can really look forward to. What's our sustainability practices? How do we save money that way but also enrich knowing that outdoors is best for kids' mental health? Not all day, every day. My eighth grade would be like, I'm not going outside all day. But it's something that I think we can look at being a forward-thinking district. So, that's just a little snippet to my teacher-coach mama brain in childhood and just why I'm so passionate about it.
Thank you. So, at this time, just about every board member has had a chance to ask one question. We probably have time for maybe two more questions total, plus that would give everyone a chance to answer first and my fairness meter would be perfect. So, does any board member have a specific question on top of their mind and maybe they'd like to pick? Anna.
Mine's simple. Sorry. Sorry. Hi. So, this position, just so everyone's aware, that it's a short-term appointment. And so, as a new school board member, I can tell you that I've put in a lot of hours already to understand a lot of different things that are going on. It was more than I thought it would be and I'm still happy I'm here. I just want you to be aware of the amount of work it's required to build relationships, to understand the landscape, and to be curious. My question to you is, do you plan on running again in November? Because that is, would be the next step for someone who's coming to this position is, are you considering it? Do you plan on doing it?
And that would first go to Leah for this one.
I'm glad you remember. So, the answer would be a strong yes. I completely agree. I think that the idea of less than a year commitment to this feels like a disservice to everyone involved. So, I think a long-term commitment to the role is essential. And I can tell you, I have thought long and hard and potentially overthought my ability to balance the commitment with my family and work and other responsibilities. But I think I've given it about as much thought as a human being can. And I'm firmly committed. And part of why I've chosen this direction is I feel like it's all intertwined, right? I will learn and grow in ways that I think will benefit me professionally. There's no more important place for my family than our schools right now. And so, I think it, there's a thread through this commitment that would touch on everything that I care about. So, my commitment would be long-term. And I also want to say that I think it's important, I'll just speak for myself, that I think it's important not just to say, would you consider running? But how would you do the work that that is? Because it's also unique from my perspective that this would be somebody running in a presidential election. So, way different dynamic, I think, than probably any of you have had to deal with. So, I do have a lot of experience in the campaign world and understand the commitment of time and resources that it takes to run for office. That's why I've never done it before. But also, I think why I'm eyes wide open going into what that would take and am committed to doing it in the case of this opportunity and doing it well, which I think means knocking on doors, engaging with community, and earning their vote. So, I just firmly would say, yes, I'm committed.
Thank you. Rachel.
I also would say, yes, I am committed to that in the long term. I was excited to see that this panel was an opportunity to get started on the school board, just because of, I think, the big learning curve, which can come with, you know, running for an elected office. Excited for the opportunity and in this short-term initial spot, being able to have the chance to really dig into the role and learn and really get a grasp on all the complexity of it to be better prepared for that long term.
Thank you. Kate.
My commitment would be long-term. I've, one thing that comes to mind is I've been working in education for over 20 years and being a mom. For me, there's not a lot of separation between my passion for not only my children but children everywhere and just giving my time, talents, and passions to educational spaces. It's what I do. So, I would consider the board an extension of work that I already enjoy being a part of. I think I have a lot of growth, a lot to learn. And I think I also know my strengths and my gifts. And I would really welcome the opportunity to fold into your space and learn from you. And then I also know, same as what Rachel was saying, actually, it was Leah, but just the campaigning involved would be, that would be a big lever for me. So, I'd be reaching out to you all who have done it before and other people that have their eyes and ears on what that looks like. Because I also don't take that lightly either. So, my answer is yes.
Thank you. Catherine.
Mine is also yes. I have my past, I spent 10 years in the youth development field and I miss that close proximity to schools. And so, I would be very enthusiastic about returning to being a bit closer to actual youth and teachers and that kind of, the whole development system. My kids are young in elementary school, kindergarten, first and third grade. So, we're firmly in the district for a while. And so, I'm committed to making those schools the best they can be while we're here, but also for all of the future kids that will be, you know, coming along in our neighborhoods as well as looking to the older youth that are already in middle school and high school and making sure that their experience remains as good as it is and even improves in this short term. Also, I'm aware of the campaigning commitment. I look forward to it. I initially went to school in Washington DC expecting to go into politics more directly. And so, I get a charge out of campaigning, talking to people, listening to communities, working with other people in leadership positions, you know, merging our interests and our goals, being able to have cohesive, coherent messaging. And I know that our community is really active in that way. And so, I look forward to working with the existing leaders and future leaders.
Thank you. Jackie, did I see your hand up for the last question?
Sure, I can. I'll just ask a really quick question. With the retirement of Superintendent Krieger, the district will be looking for a new superintendent. What qualities or characteristics would you look for in a new superintendent?
And Rachel.
Qualities and characteristics that come to mind for me is somebody who, I mean, first and foremost, obviously, has the educational experience and the administrative experience to be able to step into such an important role. But I think equally as important, somebody who is open-minded, flexible, comfortable with accepting a challenge and being challenged by whether it be the community, other members throughout the board. And someone that is able to look at a variety of different perspectives, ideas, approaches, and I think just has a balanced mindset.
Thank you. Kate.
Yeah. I would be looking for somebody who has diverse perspectives, whether that be through their lived experiences, positions that they put themselves in, ways that they've shown that they're open to learning and growing and developing. I think no matter what position you're in, it's really important to show that you are open to receiving feedback and new ideas. And again, I said this before, but context does matter. So, getting to know our context and getting to know it deeply and deciding then what steps to do moving forward. Someone that has educational experience. I think that can look a lot of variety of ways. I would love it if our new superintendent taught at some point because once you're a teacher, you get what that's like. Coached as well. Someone that has a heart for teaching and learning, open, again, open to hearing different perspectives. I also think about the dance floor versus balcony analogy, right? Being, having your eyes and ears on that dance floor and being involved and seeing what's going on, but knowing that it's very important to step back and have a balcony view and a systems view so that you can really, and then, but still strategically, taking time to gather data before, you know, maybe big changes are implemented. I know when I was a principal, that whole first year, I just built relationships and gathered data. And like, I am, and that's not my style, but I wasn't going to come in and make swooping changes to a school. I needed to form relationships and show people that I truly cared. So, yeah.
Thank you. Catherine.
I think some important characteristics are transparency. I think that this is a public position and a lot of people are impacted by this person's decisions. You know, students, families, communities, educators, administration. I'd like to look for someone with demonstrated honesty. You know, I think that this position has to be the bearer of good news and bad news and so, they need to be honest about that. I'd look for someone with the ability to collaborate and cooperate. You know, going back to preschool lessons of working together, playing nicely. Someone who really listens, actively listens, doesn't just sit. Someone who really listens, actively listens, doesn't just sit in conversation, but truly listens and is open to learning. Another thing that I think is important is someone's commitment to community connectedness. I think that this is a community position and community, a lot of different communities. There are school communities, there's the school board community, there's the family community. But community is a really powerful protective factor against so many things. And I think if you have a strong community, you can weather many storms. And so I think that would be an important value for the person to have. And then I think that this person would need to be open to changing their mind. I think it's an important characteristic in a leader, someone who can gather the data, can listen to the voices, can invite people to the table, and be open to saying, huh, I see this a different way now, I'm going to change my mind. And not be so set in their ways that, that they can't shift when it's necessary. So I think that is an incredibly important characteristic.
Thank you. Leah.
So again, apologies to repeat things that have already been said, but, you know, I think obviously, first and foremost, a background and incompetencies in the field of education is important. I also think being able to see the big picture. You know, as I said earlier, I think this is about thinking far into the future and being strategic about that. And also, I would say driving others to be inspired, because if you as a leader want to go one way and you're trying to move an entire district in that direction, I just, this is a lot to try to get your arms around. But I think a visionary leader in this case needs to bring others along, right? You're not leading if no one's following. And we would be looking then for somebody who can engage and excite the teachers and staff, the families, the young people in the direction that we're headed. And I do, and I do want to repeat the openness to, to change and adaptation and growth. If we're saying that, you know, we want to embrace the opportunity to learn, then I think that a person needs to embody that too, in being willing to grow, adapt, be open to, to change. And as was already stated, I think a lot of this does come down to trust as well. So I think an openness and willingness to listen and be transparent is, is really important to, to foster that trust and then, I think, enhance hopefully, community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's going to wrap up our questions for you. I just wanted to say, echo pretty much what every board member said, thank you again for being here. I, I think we all recognize it's not easy being in the public eye and having questions asked at you. But if it's any consolation, you have now made the decision very difficult on the board, because I feel like any one of you would be an amazing addition to our District 196 School Board. Unfortunately, we do have to select somebody. But if you aren't selected, I would please encourage you to stay involved with our district and one of our advisory councils or in any of our schools, because I can tell you all have a passion for public education. Before we officially break, though, I wanted to give any of you, not required, but any of you a chance to ask any questions of the board. I won't call anyone, just feel free to raise your, you don't have to ask a question if you don't have one.
Mine comes back to the grocery store example. I'm genuinely curious as to a situation like that. Have you, I'm sure you've had conversations, but is there like a protocol? You know, is there, is there anything developed where you're like, okay, hey, you're out in public, someone asks you a tough question, this is what we do as a board? Or, and, and if you do have that, just curious in terms of what the process took to get to that place and/or if you plan on developing something like that. And again, the grocery store doesn't have to be the example, but just, you know, thinking about what those responses do look like.
Well, since I asked the question, I want to tell you what I was, what I was getting at there. And I think you all hit on it in, in, you know, in your, in the way that you answered. Just knowing the role of the school board member, what we can and can't do in terms of like particular, like individual classroom situations or such, you know, and knowing that there are resources within the district where you can point the person, you know, and I know at least one of you said, you know, did that person go through that? And I don't want to say chain of command, but it's really, it's kind of that way. You know, did you talk to the appropriate people that, you know, at every step of the way? And if you reached the dead end, and then how do we get you in the, you know, so that you're past that impediment? But really just looking for, you know, the acknowledgement that it isn't our role as individual school board members to solve specific problems in a specific classroom. That's not, the board is flying, you know, we're setting policy, we're establishing budgets, we're setting big, broad goals for the district. We can't get down and be that person who is solving a problem in the classroom. And I think you all, you all got that. And that's kind of what I'm looking for. And I don't think that all school board members around the state really recognize that. I mean, you hear stories, and I'm like, you know, that's really, I don't really want to get dragged in that. But it does happen. I mean, we get, I mean, I get stopped quite a bit out in public where people want to talk to me about, and I'm always, like you said, always happy to talk to people about what they're seeing in the schools and what we can do differently. But when it starts getting down to specific problems, it's always good to, you know, say, we have a superintendent, I can get you to the superintendent, director of secondary education, or whatever the appropriate person is, and, and get the person on the right path. So, no, I think you all did a good job answering that. Thank you.
I would just add to a ground, just some of the, you said kind of norms about how to behave. Believe it or not, out of all the elected positions out there, school board member is the only one that statutorily requires school board members to go through training. So yes, we all, in the legislature, there's a law that says we have to go through training, I believe within the first year of being appointed to a board. So we do have training that you would go to as a new school board member, where they will cover some of those situations as well, to give you that background. Okay. Want to add something?
I just wanted to quickly add, I mean, what's been said is pretty much clarifying the role. I mean, it might seem basic sometimes, when I was running, when I was thinking running, simply I went and looked at it exactly what is the duties of a school board. And alone that, there's a training, everything available, is there something written? Yes, there's the statutes. And not only that, our district has a policy. We have a code of ethics that we all have to follow that's clearly, you know, laid it out. And if, for one, it's just, I think it's a policy 202 and 203 dash something. So, yes, we have a policy. At a situation like that, the code of ethics becomes really important, having a clear ideas, exactly what your roles are. And there's a lot of different things, different interpretations, and people have different views, what the school board really does. There are people that might think school board is to have a position, an issue, and advocate for that position. Some think it is to implement and oversee everything. So that's pretty much what's laid out in the duties. The school board is a high-level policymaking, and yes, there are resources and training to literally, you know, that clearly clarifies everything.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much for being here. You've made a very difficult decision for the board to have to make next. But then I'm going to end this portion, so feel free to join the audience, or you can leave. And for board members, I think I'll put us on a 10-minute recess, because they need to reset up the cameras before we deliberate, and there might be different breaks we need. Just for board members, you can either, on the break, you can remain here, but just if you're leaving the room, keep in mind the open meeting law, to not gromp up or deliberate outside of our session while we're on recess. So, so we will take a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 7:51.
We're going anyway.
Okay, we are going to, our recess has ended, it's been about 10 minutes, so we are going to go back in session as a board. If any audience members willing to stay would please take their seats and remain quiet so the board can deliberate. So this was just one action item tonight, and like I said, I think I love the candidates that came to interview with us tonight. I hate that they made us have a hard decision in front of us. So similar to how we've done these before, instead of just starting with a motion, I don't think that that's really fair, I was just going to start opening up with actual just deliberation. So I think we all recognize we had four amazing candidates tonight, but we also know we have an obligation where we can only select one. So does, I'm just going to open it up, does someone from the board want to speak up and share maybe who maybe their preferred candidate was and why, so we can start the discussion?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can go first. So again, I know the candidates, I know they are here, some of them are here. I just have to once again say, what a talented and inspiring group of individuals. I feel like as a school board member, I feel like I leave this meeting becoming a better board member because of the inspiration that you've provided to us. So thank you, thank you for that. Corey and I were saying, if there was a way for us to add all four, we would be, we would be able to do that. So I just hope that whatever is the decision, it isn't disappointed to those who aren't here. And I sincerely hope that each of you remains engaged and sees a future on the board, if not now, in the future as, as well. So with that, I'll just maybe start by saying, once I reviewed the applications, I, I had an academic approach to who I thought would be my, would be some of the ways I would approach that. But having, being and hearing these answers in person, listening to people's points of view, the thoughtfulness and, and the way they answered their question, I would like to propose Leah as being my candidate to, to the, to being appointed to the board. Leah presented, just like many others, a very holistic, evidence-based approach. One of the things that resonated with me is, which I believe in, is the school board, the philosophy is, that I believe in, is to go fast, go alone, to go far, go together. And that sentiment was, was conveyed to me over and over again, the understanding of what it takes to be a cohesive and cordial and a collaborative member. And the involvement that Leah has had through the 196 Foundation, the Legislative Advisory Council, and throughout the journey would, would, would make her my harder, but, but choice that I have to make in this, in this contest.
Does another board want to, a board member would like to weigh in on that? Think differently or comments? Yes, Secoutin.
I guess I can go second too, since I pretty much looked at this in general. I liked the word holistically, because we started with application that had six questions, and so many different people. And within this election, it was really hard. One thing that I want to also echo is that we have a very wonderful community here. We received strong candidates, if you looked at it, we're so lucky to have such an interest from good people, wonderful people that are, all have involvement and connections to our district one way or another. And as has been said, looking at both the applications and the questions that's been laid out, I think we owe to our community and also the different stakeholders that our commi, in the district, that I, you know, would second to what Sachin suggested, that Leah pretty much showed the whole complete package, not only involvement in a way, she also understands the complexities of what the board really handles. And this is a really tough job, I could tell you that. There's a lot of responsibilities. When I said it with my questions, I was trying to gouge, does this person, can they really fulfill the responsibilities of the board? And they represent pretty much everyone in our community, everybody. I mean, everybody cannot sit in this, you know, tables. But the thing about it is, everybody can represent people and bring voices from the community. Who could collaborate one way or another has the best interest for our students and teachers and everyone. And that decision given to us, I feel like I'll be serving well to at least have someone that I feel comfortably that understands the whole complete issues that we face, has connections, and deeply curious about our community. So I would second Leah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I want to say that every time one of the candidates said an answer, I changed my mind about who I wanted. It was, you know, it's, it's tough for me to sit here and feel indecisive, because I'm usually in my, in my day-to-day life fairly decisive. I, I looked, when I was looking at people on paper, and as Secoutin said, we just had such a wealth of riches when we got the applications. But I was, you know, the four people who came forward and the fifth that we'd invited but didn't come forward, all brought slightly different strengths and perspectives to the table that I really valued and thought would be a great addition to the board. I'm thinking of like, you know, Rachel's focus on mental health, Catherine's focus on public health, and Kate's, you know, focus on coaching, pedagogy, and Leah's deep community connections. And one of the things I was thinking about, like what, what are going to be the big challenges besides the steep learning curve for a new board member? What are, what are some of the initial challenges that a new board member plucked, you know, from the community and put in this position? What's that, that person going to face? And the initial thing is going to be running for reelection, right? It's going to be, you know, not just convincing five of us, but convincing an entire community that I'm the best person for this role. And having worked with Leah on several campaigns, I know, and she spoke pretty eloquently about, you know, her strengths in that area, I, I think that's kind of what gives her the edge as I'm thinking about. And I don't think we could go wrong if, if, you know, if somebody had, you know, talked about, you know, Kate first, I would have said, yep. And I could see that, you know, see the arguments for Kate. So I don't think we can go wrong with any of the four. But as I, as I think about what's confronting this new person as she begins her role, I think that initial, you know, getting over that hump in November is going to be a tough one. And so I think that's kind of what's swaying me.
And I wanted to add too, because I, I agree that election is a big, you know, concern for me too. Not a concern, but it's, it's not something, when, when we are appointed to the board, we're learning our role, and we have four years to think about it. But it's hard to be appointed to the board and then also have to think about a big election coming up the same year. But then also, the election is only to finish up Bianca Vernig's assignment, so there will be another election the following year. They have to run for, for the four years. So I do agree with that. One thing I wanted to call out, so, and I, Leah kind of stood out for me for a lot of those same reasons. I did want to also, just every single, every single person we heard from today, I was blown away from it. I agree, there were some answers that were like, oh my gosh, that was amazing. And I loved the different perspectives that they brought. I also just really wanted to call out, I heard especially from Catherine, her big, big focus on data and data-driven decision-making, which is something we've talked about a lot as a board. So I just wanted to call that out, because it really echoed some conversations that we had around strategic planning as well. But yes, I'd be in favor of Leah's as well. Jackie or Anna, did you want to weigh in?
I didn't hear which, I didn't hear the last part. You'd be in favor?
I said I'd be in favor of Leah as well. That's what I said.
I reserve the right to go last as the newest school board member. And done.
And done, thank you. I can't believe the courageous women that we heard here tonight. Kate, I love it, are you on the dance floor or are you doing a balcony view? That was a great comment. That, I'm going to take that one and steal it. That was a great, and that's what this job is like. Are you on the dance floor or are you taking a balcony view? You should be taking balcony view, but sometimes we all like to get in there and be on the dance floor and fix it. Not so much as doing, you know, seating charts for teachers, but maybe telling them what color wastebaskets they should have. You know, we all kind of like, have, like to do that. So that was, to me, it was a great, a great conversation, a great piece of advice, and it helped me figure out who you were. Catherine, I loved you talking about staying in your lane. Again, that's our job, staying in the lane. It's sometimes hard to not stay in the lane when you're doing this job. And as Corey said, you're talking about data and community and voice. I thought that was marvelous. Leah, you had a lot of great comments too, and I forgot to, you talked a lot about the whole child, and I liked that. And thank you, Rachel, you talked about doing things in a holistic way. And I think that sometimes, as we think about schools, we're kind of in silos, and we, you know, here's math and here's science, and how do they mush together? And how do we think, do things more holistic? So to me, those were, thank you, thank you, all four of you for coming tonight. I am, would like to support Catherine Diamond.
Anna.
Oh, no, that's okay. Oh, no, that's okay. One of the things that I do in my work is that I look at what do we have an overabundance of in terms of experiences, in terms of values, in terms of how we think? And what I got up there was that these four people that were up there have all diverse experiences. So that wasn't easy, that didn't help at all as a way to isolate. What I also thought about is, I'm thinking about trying to stay balanced, the near and present priorities we have in the next 10 months, but also that next cycle of what I think is going to be very important in the next few years. So for me, I really, really liked Catherine because she has a public health experience that I don't believe any of us have on the board. I don't think so, I could be speaking. I really liked that. And, but Rachel also had mental health experience, and so that's one of the things in so many of the emails that I've gotten over the past few weeks, is the mental strain and the mental toll that so many of the changes in the past few years have taken on our teachers and our families and our students. I think that's a lens that's really important as well. Kate, I loved your passion and energy and how you, clearly you think from an equity lens, which I think is really important. And as a matter of fact, I kind of felt like everyone has an equity lens, which is, again, which didn't make this easier. Leah, and I'm struggling with this one because I did campaign with Leah out there, and I want to be very transparent about that, is that I did campaign with her, she helped me on my campaign trail, and so I got to see parts of Leah that many people probably didn't have the opportunity to see. We've had challenging conversations where we've had to push back on each other, and that was not easy to do for either one of us, it was kind of emotional. And, but she had the privilege of that opportunity. Not everyone has that privilege up here that they got to, I got to work with them. The biggest thing for me is what we are facing in the next couple of months, and that is superintendent, that is the reading act and getting literacy up and running, and being able to understand all the different components, not just of the school board, but legislatively, how it's really a gestalt. We are not just a school district, we are part of a bigger picture. And knowing all the different components of that is super, I'm learning, has been very beneficial for me. And someone who can come in and learn that role quickly is super important, given the time constraints we have today, given the fact that we have some things that we really need to attend to quickly and logically and objectively. And so, struggling with this one. I however do not think that because of my day-to-day, I do not think I can be as objective as I'd like to be with choosing from the two candidates that I would narrow down, and so I'm just going to do it based on experience. And so I'm going to choose, I'm going to choose Leah.
So I appreciate the deliberation from the board and the transparency, and I recognize this was not an easy decision, but just hearing the comments from the board, I'm willing to put a motion out there and see how the vote goes. But based on what I'm hearing from the board, I would like to make a motion to have Leah Gardner fill our open school board vacancy and have authorized the chair and clerk to execute a resolution to that effect as well. It is code that we have a resolution to that, so I'm adding that in there. Is there a second?
A second?
Is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for Leah Gardner to fill the school board vacancy and also authorizing the chair and clerk to execute a resolution to that effect. I just wanted to add that if there is a no vote on this resolution, it doesn't necessarily mean that that board member did not like the candidate, it just means that maybe they thought that there was a better choice. I just want to make that apparent in case, because no's can sometimes be hard to hear. So with that, the motion was made by me, seconded by Sachin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries on a 5-1 vote. Congratulations to Leah Gardner. And with that, brings us to the end of our business for today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion by Art?
Second.
And a second by Sekoudin. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. We are adjourned.